Testing, testing.
All right, everyone. I'm going to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Sorry to interrupt your conversations, but we're going to try to get through our Planning Commission meeting for this evening, November 3rd. As we transition from the Planning Summit kickoff into our Planning Commission meeting. Thanks, everyone, for letting us get started. All right, I'm going to call a roll call because I know everybody's thrilled about that. Jerry Norman. Mike Presko.
I'm here.
I'm Mark Baughman, I'm here. Carrie Bosworth.
Present.
John Bachman.
Present.
TC Labby. He's here. And I believe Josh Amato is not going to be able to join us this evening. Okay? You guys are welcome to stay for the Planning Commission meeting. Julian, can we go ahead and read the meeting accessibility statement?
The public is welcome to attend Planning Commission meetings in person at City Hall, 801 228th Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Public comments: Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes if representing an organization, and seven minutes for an agenda public comment. For those providing comments through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To give public comment via Zoom, join the webinar via the link https://us06web.zoom.us/j/82822648794. To give public comment via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number: US+1-253-215-8782. Webinar ID: 82822648794.
All right, thanks. Next is approval of this evening's agenda. Anyone have comments about the agenda? Okay, if no comments, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next, approval of the October 20th meeting minutes. Anybody have any corrections or comments about the meeting minutes from our last meeting on October 20th? Okay, no corrections or comments, so we'll call the meeting minutes from October 20th approved by common consent. Next, we have non-agenda public comment. Does anyone want to make non-agenda public comment this evening? All right, well, this will be some of the first in-person public comment we've had in a while, so remember to push the microphone button.
... sustain our community. And I'm going to jump into the deep end here. How address longstanding local housing shortages by increasing different and diverse smaller housing styles we have oversupplies of and reducing, excuse me, undersupplies and reducing single-family homes we have oversupplies of? What are these suggested numbers? To reduce additional large single-family homes by about 2,000 housing units in 95% of the city, and increase different diverse and smaller housing by about 8,000 units in centers over time. That's a net increase of 6,000. Doing this would meet about 1/3 of our local shortages as of 2010 within our community and modestly confront the largest ailment our city has had since incorporation, that is housing supplies not meeting needs of those living and working in Sammish for planned and unplanned changes over the cycle of life. What happens with net six? How does it work? Here's some key points. New car trips are equal or less. Student generation, 40% less. Impacts extraordinarily less on stormwater. And over 500 acres are far less impacted from housing. Circling back to revenue, our city receives over $200 million in one-time fees and over $30 million a year in added revenue. How about for the people that can stay in Sammish? 8,000 of our own households over time have options to stay in Sammish and feel the joy of being able to do that and sharing and saving over $200 million a year by lower-cost housing. That is needed, wanted, and essential. This is a relevant holistic result formula that can enable win-win-win, non-zero-sum game outcomes where virtually everyone and everything stands to gain. Appreciate the chance to talk.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else want to make non-agenda public comment? Is there anyone, Julian, on the meeting?
We have no hands raised.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to our new business for this evening. For those of you, if you were not participating in the session before this, we did a kickoff meeting for the Planning Summit series. And so for our main topic this evening, we're going to dive a little bit deeper and do a presentation on some of the background with the agencies and the planning requirements. So let's get started with that. David, is this you?
This is me. Good evening, Planning Commission. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here, so bear with me for a second while I do that. Great. Thank you for your patience with me while I did that. So as Commissioner Baughman mentioned, we just recently concluded our first Planning Summit, sort of the kickoff of the comprehensive plan process. So we thought it would be appropriate to follow that with some more detail on the framework for the comprehensive plan, some of the state, regional, county, and local requirements that we have to follow. Keep in mind that this at times might seem redundant, you may have heard this before, but what we're doing here, too, is we're trying to build a record. We're trying to make sure that we have a video and a presentation and some questions and answers that we could direct others to go watch if they have questions about the comprehensive plan. It's also important for us to document what the process is because others will be joining us later in the process and will not have the benefit of having heard this. So we want to, again, be able to create that record to point them back to this so they could spend some time reviewing it and understand where they are in the process at that point when they do join us. So where are we in the comp plan process? We're at the very beginning. We've initiated some stakeholder outreach. We're in the process of existing conditions audit. And we're really, at this point, looking around and seeing what we have, what documents we have that we can use, what past information we have that we can carry forward. We're looking at what the requirements are, what might have changed, not only in state law or at the county level, but also in the community. We're wanting to set up relationships with different stakeholder groups to make sure we know who to contact. In many cases, it's been a few years since we've spoken with different agencies or different groups, and we want to reset that. So that's a really big part that we're underway with right now. As you can see, it's a lengthy process. We're going to be working on this through December of '24. The last few months of the process are reserved for engagement with the various agencies, and we'll talk about that. So we're likely to need to bring this to council with a final draft comprehensive plan that they can consider final wordsmithing on, final changes and adoption sometime in Q3 of '24. So working backwards from that, we then see that we'll have time for plan drafting early in '24. Prior to that, we'll be working primarily on different policies related to different elements throughout '23. And leading up to that, we'll be working on scoping. So when I look at this, we have a hard deadline of December 2024, so I always plan backwards from that time as opposed to planning forward, which it's a little harder to hit the mark. So we're going to keep reminding the commission of that deadline, remind the public of that deadline. It is important to note that that deadline did change with the passing of House bill. I can't remember the number of the House bill, it was shown to you earlier, but that changed the deadline from June of '24 to December of '24. And it also made the cycle from an every-eight-year cycle to an every-10-year cycle. One of the challenges that we have or opportunities that we have with this cycle of comprehensive plan is that in the middle of the process, we're going to be going into an election year. So it's really important that the work that we do is well-documented, founded, balanced, and that we really engage the community because regardless of how the election outcome plays out, we really want to make sure that we have a body of work and a plan that represents the community. So that is one thing that we are keeping in mind as we progress because one of the worst outcomes could be is that we go down a path of designing a comprehensive plan that seems one-sided to some, and we possibly end up with an election that then results in a political change, different direction, and we then have to redo all of the work that we have just finished, and we are out of budget and out of time. So keeping that in mind, we're really here to try and find balance and to try and work with all different segments of the community and work with all different perspectives and viewpoints on these topics. That's really important. The planning framework overview, this is outlined in more detail in tonight's Agenda Bill. It starts out with the Growth Management Act, which that's statewide requirements that's then passed down to the regional requirements of Puget Sound Regional Council with Vision 2050, which then is passed down to the countywide planning policies or the CPPs, and then the Sammish Comprehensive Plan. So what we're tasked with doing is looking broadly at what the state requirements are, trying to understand how those might fit into our community and how we might implement those. We also have to consider what the regional vision is and how the city fits into the regional vision. As was mentioned in tonight's Planning Summit, the city, and you've heard this before, the city's in the cities and towns category. We keep saying that because it's really important to remember that. And I recommend, if you have a chance, to take a look at PSRC's Vision 2050 and, you know, using the word search tool, the search box, you can find things much more quickly. So if you searched cities and towns, you would likely see where that pops up, and you could see how that's threaded throughout the document much faster than trying to read the fairly lengthy, dense document. With regard to countywide planning policies, these are typically updated on a cycle that is in advance to the cities, all of the cities, taking on their comprehensive plan updates. Ideally, the county would update the countywide planning policies, and then the city could have a chance to, the cities would have a chance to review the changes to CPPs, get to understand them, and be able to strategize how to address those in the comprehensive plan and budget for addressing those in the comprehensive plan prior to starting the process. The CPPs were updated by the county in June of 2021. And, trying to remember if that's June of 2021? Yeah, I think so. And, and one of the issues there is that, at the point of updating of the CPPs, the county also identified that they would need to do further work on the housing policies. And as part of the adoption, they directed the King County Growth Management Planning Council Affordable Housing Committee to pick up this topic of affordable housing and housing diversity and housing need later in, later in the year in 2022. The challenge there is that, what that means is that the policies that we have in the countywide planning policies for housing are not final. Although they were updated, we are still waiting for a second wave of updates on countywide planning policies related to housing to occur, and the county at this point does not anticipate those happening until at the very earliest June of 2023, if not December of 2023. That presents a challenge to us as it's a bit of a moving target. We don't really know what exactly those county policies will say. We've been paying very close attention to those policies to make sure that we are catching, catching the drafts and trying to feel out how that might affect our work plan and our budget. So we'll keep you informed on that. But do keep in mind that this is a challenge for staff and a challenge for our consultant because we normally, at this time in the comprehensive plan update cycle, would have already received the final countywide planning policies. But in this case, we have most of them, but we don't have the final housing updates. So a little more detail on some of these layers. The Growth Management Act, it's a state law requiring certain towns, cities, and counties to develop comprehensive plans to plan for population growth in a coordinated and intentional way. It establishes planning framework to ensure consistency between state, regional, and local comprehensive planning. And the GMA sets requirements that must be included in comprehensive plans. It basically provides a structure for a plan, chapters, if you will, they're called elements in the state law, and we have to include certain elements. And there are requirements for what each element must include in terms of detail. There are 14 planning goals to guide comprehensive plan development. They're listed here, I won't go into great detail on them. One of the things you'll keep hearing us say, and I believe we say again in this presentation, is, is that this is a balancing act. You cannot read any one element of a comprehensive plan by itself. When you read the comprehensive plan, you need to think about the full weight of all of the different elements and components of the comprehensive plan as opposed to thinking about one specific element or policy by itself. From that manner, or in that sense, it may appear or feel inherently conflicting at times because we're trying to achieve one thing, but at the same time achieve something else which may be going in different directions. So keep that in mind. Remember, read the whole thing together as opposed to think about one policy and how it stands on its own. With regard to regional planning, the next layer in the circle diagram that you saw, this is made up of regional jurisdictions, Puget Sound Regional Council, and it really, this is really where we start to get into some of the more specifics about how the larger metropolitan area operates. Where things are located, how they fit together, how freight is provided, how commerce happens, how transit happens. PSRC is really essential to the smooth operation of the Puget Sound region. PSRC, through its vision for the region, sets policy for how, what role each of the different urban geographies, which are, for us, the cities and towns' urban geography all fit together. So this, again, is a really good guiding document. I would strongly recommend getting, taking a chance to open up PSRC's Vision 2050 and just get a feel for how it fits together because it will be something we will be continuing to revisit throughout the comprehensive plan process. Again, PSRC's Vision 2050. You can see amongst the different urban geographies how Sammish fits in. We have the metropolitan cities such as Seattle. We have the core cities. I can't recall if Bellevue is in metropolitan or core. I think it's in the core. We have high-capacity transit communities. One example of a high-capacity transit community is Mercer Island. It is a city much like Sammish, although it has a freeway system and a light rail system going through it, or soon-to-be light rail system. Sammish fits into the cities and towns category. This, this is all of the cities and towns within the Puget Sound that are listed here. Within King County, there are 19. Then it goes into urban unincorporated and rural. With regard to percentage of growth and how that's assigned, the cities and towns category is anticipated to take 5% of the region's growth. The way, there is a translation that happens that you want to pay attention to where the PSRC plan talks about growth in terms of people. There then is a translation that occurs at the county level where the county then talks about growth in terms of housing units. And there is a per-household factor that's applied by the county. And that, there are some other elements that go into that translation. However, it's important to keep in mind that PSRC plans for people, the county plans for housing units. The county planning groups that you'll be hearing more about throughout this process are the King County Interjurisdictional Team, and this is made up of city representatives. They're, I believe, appointed to serve on the IJT. It supports the Growth Management Planning Council. It sort of serves as a body that previews work going to the Growth Management Planning Council to vet issues and make sure the work is complete. There's also the GMPC, which is, consists of appointed members that make up representation of the county on a planning group. There's the Affordable Housing Committee, which supports the Growth Management Planning Council and consists of members of GMPC who are specifically appointed to the Affordable Housing Committee. And then there's the Housing Interjurisdictional Team, the HIJT, which is another group of staff that supports the GMPC, AHC, and performs a role similar to the IJT. So typically, we see work that we need to bring, when we, when we're required, when we are required to take work to the GMPC, we first meet with county staff, then we take the presentation and any work that we're doing through the IJT before finally we are able to present it to the GMPC. It works similarly with the Affordable Housing Committee, that if we are to bring something to the Affordable Housing Committee, we have to typically go through staff, then the HIJT, then the GMPC, or then the AHC. The GMPC and the AHC determine the appropriate levels of local growth, the types of growth, and where it should occur. They're responsible for drafting and overseeing implementation of countywide planning policies. The countywide planning policies provide a vision, set goals and targets, and create a framework for each jurisdiction to develop its comprehensive plan. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at the countywide planning policies, the King County Growth Management Planning Council website has some great information on those. The actual recently adopted countywide planning policies are posted to the county's website there. Again, using the word search function can oftentimes help you move through that document much faster if you're interested in a specific topic. But these will be something that we will be bringing up repeatedly throughout our comprehensive plan effort. One of the requirements for the comprehensive plan is that it is consistent and aligned with countywide planning policies. Finally, local comprehensive plans. This is ultimately where we take the direction from the state, the direction of policy from the region, and direction from the county, and mold it into policy language that is appropriate for the community or the city. Creates goals and policies that are responsive to GMA, the PSRC multi-county planning policies, and the county countywide planning policies. Again, shaped by local conditions, public engagement, and legislative bodies. Tonight, you heard the beginning as part of the Planning Summit of public engagement, really wanting to make sure we allow people's voices to be heard, that we're really hearing them, and that we, we understand what the issues are here in the community. The foundation of a comprehensive plan is the community vision and the associated framework goals. You'll start seeing the Planning Summit, Planning Summit and the City Council's agenda be filled with the community visioning effort. I understand that the, I believe that the council's supposed to pick up visioning work in December. So I'm, are we planning to bring that through Planning Commission, or does that go straight back to council? Got it, okay. So yeah, Planning Commission will also be seeing the visioning work and have, have a conversation on that. The visioning part is really, the visioning component of the comprehensive plan update is really essential and important because it, it really serves as a touchstone throughout the comprehensive plan. It serves as, as a statement that we need to test all policy statements against, or it's, it really sets the tone for where we're going in the future. So we look forward to that work. There was some work done on that in the past with the past council. The work was, resulted in a report with some recommendations, and our consultant is picking up that work, and the Planning Commission and council will be building on top of that work that was already done. Conditions need to be reflective of anticipated growth targets. We've been through several years of analysis around land capacity and working on growth targets with the county. They need to fit within range of our urban geography. So 5% of the county's growth goes to the cities and towns' urban geography group. And within the 19 cities and towns, that 14,000-unit target needs to be divvied up. Sammish engaged in that process, and there were different iterations of our growth target. Our growth target that was recently set this past spring, I believe, was it in March, is 2,100 housing units. The comprehensive plan must demonstrate how policies will result in programs, infrastructure, and housing necessary to support future growth. You heard a question here tonight as part of the Planning Summit around, does the city's comprehensive plan consider budget needs in order to provide for things like transportation or, or parks or others as we, as we predict, project growth happening? So the answer is we, we don't create a budget analysis that goes along with it. It's, the interesting thing about comprehensive plans is they result in implementation to the degree the community is able to implement it. So if, if a, if there's a really grandiose vision of how something might happen, it really doesn't get implemented until there's funding available or willpower available to designate that funding for it to happen. However, having policy on certain items can result in our being eligible for grant monies, and grant monies are definitely a great way to assist the community in funding some of the needs we have as we grow as a community and change as a community. Again, the comprehensive plan represents a balancing act of different priorities, and it may appear inherently conflicting. So in addition to all that information, there are several parallel projects that we will be undertaking simultaneously at different points in the process of a comprehensive plan. All of them merge into, at some point, the mainstream of the comprehensive plan. So you're going to start to hear more about all of these various projects. The Housing Action Plan, which I believe you heard about last week, or at the last meeting where we brought the Housing Needs Assessment to you. Climate Action Plan, which you heard about the initial work on that through greenhouse gas reduction and vehicle miles travel. gas reduction and vehicle miles traveled efforts that are grant funded. There will be code updates that will happen. These usually happen towards the tail end of the process, although if we identify policy changes that have to happen early, then we will start working on these code changes earlier in the process because code changes themselves are a pretty big project. There's the Critical Areas Updates. These are required by state law. When we update the comprehensive plan, we're required to review and update our critical areas regulations for our defined critical areas, which include wetlands, streams, steep slopes, or geologic hazard areas, flood hazard areas, and habitat areas. That is quite a bit of work in itself that will likely come online in the last third of the comprehensive plan update process, although we will start it in the new year here in '23. There's also a topic that, and we added this one specifically here, although it's not necessarily a unique project, it is a really fundamental part of a comprehensive plan. And we have, we currently and historically in Samamish have had an interesting way of, the relationship between the comprehensive plan and the zoning map is interesting. It's unique, I haven't really seen it before, and it's not typical to how a comprehensive plan relates to zoning. So, most cities have what's called a futures land use map that includes designations like multifamily low, multifamily high, single family low, single family high, community business, or business district, or civic designation. And within each of those designations, there is an allowed range of zones that you might see. So, say, single family high, well, you might see R6 and R8 fit in that category. And then what happens is, that is implemented down to the neighborhood level, the block level, through a zoning map. And zoning should be assigned responsive to on-the-ground features and characteristics and limitations. You know, where is the sewer available? Where is the stormwater available? What sites might infiltrate better? What sites might have better access to transportation infrastructure? So, what you'll, you see then is a plan that shows how growth should really be occurring based on your futures land use map. We anticipate growth could happen in these areas based on these different land use patterns, but that it's ultimately implemented in a zoning map on the ground level through very specific zoning. Samamish's futures land use map identically matches our zoning map, so it doesn't allow for any room to move one way or another. If any of you followed along with the Santoni rezone that happened two years ago, you'll note that that was a very difficult, complicated process because our futures land use map does not include a range, include designations that allow for ranges of zones. So we had to go through a somewhat cumbersome process of first updating the futures land use map, and then correspondingly updating the zoning. Whereas, in other scenarios in other cities, they would have that range of options that they could then just rezone it and go through the process of rezoning without having to go through the process of updating the comprehensive plan. Finally, there's certification. This is a big one for us. We definitely want to have a complete and certified comprehensive plan. It's sent to Puget Sound Regional Council for certification to ensure consistency with regional planning efforts in the GMA. It's reviewed by the Washington State Department of Commerce. And new this year, the plan is to be reviewed by the King County GMPC and AHC. So what that means is, with the changes in housing policy that we're expecting from King County, and with the new addition that our plan is to be reviewed by King County to demonstrate whether or not, or to make a finding of whether or not the plan is consistent with King County countywide planning policies, specifically the King County affordable housing policies. We have an extra stop on the certification circuit, and we will be required to take this to King County where I understand they will likely have their staff review the housing element of our comprehensive plan. And then that will likely, and it's not defined yet, it will likely either go to the GMPC for final say, based on recommendation from their, from their staff, or it might go to the Affordable Housing Committee. I've also heard a possibility that it could just be done by their staff. Again, these are some of the elements of a changing landscape that we have with the county. And we're, I'll just go ahead and say it, we're a little bit frustrated with the county right now because we really need to have final policies in order for us to successfully and predictably embark on this comprehensive plan update process. And we won't have those policies available until, at the very earliest, June, if not December of '23. So, keep that in mind if the staff appear not to know about something, or don't have an answer for you. There's a lot going on with housing right now. Oh, and the deadline again is December of '24. In the past, we have had varying conversations here at the city about what exactly is required? What happens if we don't do this? What happens if we decide not to follow countywide planning policy, or our plan is not consistent with PSRC's Vision 2050? Well, at that point, our plan would not pass certification. We would not have a complete updated plan, and that may result in challenges to the Growth Management Hearings Board, may result in the city facing state-imposed sanctions, and may result in the city losing state grant funding. Further failure to come into compliance could result in a negative effect on the city's brand and its ability to collaborate with regional partners. So, right now, what I'm hearing regionally is everyone's looking to their neighbor to see what they're doing on certain topics, and they're all wanting to know that they're not alone in trying to fix a problem, that we're all trying to fix a problem collectively. In fact, I believe HB 1220 added a component that requires that a city's plan include policy language around collaboratively working with its agency or its counterparts. So, we do want to be conscious of that. We probably don't want to be a city that's branded as difficult to work with regionally. It makes it harder for us to get grants, to get funding, to get resources. So, we're wanting to try to find the right fit for Samamish, but at the same time, understand how we're fitting in regionally and making sure that our neighbors understand our constraints and our limitations. And that's something that I have really worked hard on over the years through the growth target setting process, and also with some of the housing work that we're doing. And it's not always a fun conversation to have at the regional level. So finally, for those watching, and for those who might be watching in the future, a resource list, places to go to learn more, highly recommend visiting the Puget Sound Regional Council's website and taking a look at Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050. That's a really important piece here. There are also resources on PSRC's website around comprehensive plans and comprehensive planning, and a lot of great educational materials there. The Association of Washington Cities is a good place to go for information on comprehensive plans and on other city planning requirements. The Washington State Department of Commerce has information on comprehensive plan updates and is also a great place to go. I think the State Department of Commerce actually has the most funding out of any agency to support comprehensive plans, and they are notably staffing up right now. I've noticed some new faces, some old faces that have reappeared on some meetings we've had with them. So, they're going to be one of our advisory groups that will be helping us through some of the questions and points in the process. The King County Growth Management Planning Council, the GMPC, would highly recommend visiting their website, getting to understand how they work. The Affordable Housing Committee component of that as well, making sure to take a look at that and to see what they do. Finally, the Municipal Research and Services Center, MRSC. MRSC is a great resource, we use it regularly. They've got a lot of information on all sorts of things related to code updates as well, such as accessory dwelling units, or zoning, other different types of zoning controls. MRSC is a wonderful resource to go to for ideas and alternatives, and oftentimes legal analysis around things that some have tried and failed in doing. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chair. Are there any questions?
Thanks, David. I would say that I think maybe we've reached acronym saturation, and we may need to create a cheat sheet for some of us to try to keep up.
Fair.
Okay, who has questions, comments? Go ahead, Jerry.
It's on. Great presentation, thank you. Very helpful, very clear. What's the timeline for the Critical Area Update?
So we are waiting for budget approval, first of all. That's a really important part of it. I'll take a step back. I started working with a consultant back in April to properly scope out this update. One thing I did not want to have happen is to be caught flat-footed, so to speak, underfunded with this Critical Areas Update. We have been telling the planning commission and the council and members of the public that there are proposed, that many of the docket items that they have presented need to be rolled into the Critical Areas Update, so I didn't want to underplan and underbudget for that work. So we have what I consider to be a good budget for that. One of the biggest challenges with the Critical Areas work this year with this cycle is, we have what I would consider a fairly significant problem in our code related to what we could call geo-hazard areas. We have a wide array of protections, whether it's landslide hazard area, an erosion hazard area, erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies, a no disturbance area, drains to no disturbance area, you know, on and on. And we need a consultant to come in and do a complete inventory of those rules, and try to understand how those rules interact with each other, and ideally create one set of rules that addresses everything that all the various rules are trying to achieve, and make it clear, easy to read, understandable. And that's likely to be the biggest lift. The other components of critical areas like wetlands and wetland buffers, and streams and stream buffers are not likely to result in a large number of changes. I haven't seen, normally, critical areas updates are based on best available science, and that is kind of like a white paper or literature review on various scientific study about critical areas, why they're valuable, how they could be supported or protected. And I haven't seen a lot of literature coming out of the State Department of Ecology and Commerce related to wetlands and streams with this cycle. So, it could be a really simple update, but for the fact that we have this kind of difficult geo-hazard issue in the code, I also understand that there is a strong interest in the community on updating the habitat rules and how the habitat rules work. That connectivity in the city and in the landscape is very important for habitat, for the movement of animals and other creatures, amphibians. So, we're gonna, somewhere in the last update of the critical areas rules, there were some definitions and requirements that were changed that I feel changed how habitat was protected and implemented. And I'd like our consultant to go back and look at the older set of rules, and look at how those have changed, and look at what we might have lost along the way with that change in rule set, and where we could bolster that with the idea that we should be protecting, and growing, and looking to connect habitat patches throughout the city.
Okay, that's a thorough answer.
Sure.
I was asking about the timeframe, though. Relative, you said you need funding. Is that a city council approval that you need? Because it would seem to me that's got to be identified to update what you gave us before on buildable land. What kind, you did an assessment presentation on what have we got to work with, with this housing plan and development plan? But a lot of that may or may not be developable.
Yeah, so, we do need funding, we're waiting for that. We anticipate getting a consultant on board. The consultant, in some time, I would say, we go out to add for that, be March of '23, we get a consultant on board, and we can have them start to analyze, you know, conditions, codes, best available science, changes in state law, along those lines.
Okay. One other question, you were presented to the public tonight, nice presentation job that you did relative to this process, but some of the data on the slides that were put out conflict with the data that we've got relative to average income. I think it was $180,000 on the slide, and it's $135,000 or close to that, that we were presented relative to working on affordable housing. And then, there were discrepancies or differences, let's say, relative to how many people work from home. It was 30% or more on the current information, and the slides that were posted for this thing tonight were 13% or 15%. Big change, let's say. And other things like transportation methods. I think single-family cars were listed, like 60% of the transportation method for the city. And then if you add all the other methods that were listed, you don't come, you come up short. It isn't 100%. So, I think that we ought to be careful in reconciling what we put out there, or it's going to be potentially confusing to the people that are looking at the plan, and they see one slide deck and then another slide deck, and they don't coincide.
That, that's a great feedback. I think some of that has to do with the different generations of data, and where they come from, and when they were collected, and changes, right? The census information versus the current HUD information on area income, right? So there's, there's that. But point taken, we need to create almost a centralized data repository or source on our website that we all are working off of as the baseline for what we're talking about.
Sure, I agree, and I think we discussed that some with your consultant before that meeting, and it's accurate data, but it's at a different timeframe, and so I think we ought to be careful is all, so.
Agree, thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Who else? John, go ahead.
David, at a previous meeting, you talked about getting after the county in terms of, what do they really mean about these housing units? Do we have to produce them, put them on the ground, or just accommodate them in the comp plan? Have you gotten any clarification on that?
Yeah, so I'm going to try to share my screen again because there was a slide in there that we actually pulled from a presentation that the county did. So I think it's helpful. Bear with me for one second here, there it is, let's see. There it is, right here. Standard number three, meaningful policies. So, meaningful policies can be reasonably expected to achieve a material positive change in the jurisdiction's ability to meet housing needs. Allows the Affordable Housing Committee and staff the discretion to assess that plans not only address, but advance countywide planning policy goals and their completeness. Resembles HUD standards for enforcing Resembles HUD standards for enforcing the affirmatively furthering fair housing rule from the Fair Housing Act. So this is really the benchmark. They made it clear that the cities are not expected to physically build them, but that they want to see that the cities are not obstructing a material positive change in the jurisdiction's ability to meet housing needs. So this is where we get to the point of, well, you assign us 1,400 0 to 30% AMI units. What do we need to have in our policy language and in our code to show that? We need to show capacity for it. We need to show policy direction that enables us to work with Arch to grow our engagement in things like the Housing Trust Fund, in working on development regulations that are, that incentivize housing, that work on, what's the term for it, Kelly? What's the term for zoning that includes housing, inclusionary zoning? Sorry, inclusionary zoning, things like that. So the checklist over here is also what they are proposing to use for their review, where they basically go through countywide planning policy 1 through 27, and they verify that our comp plan is consistent with it, in alignment with it, and not thwarting it or precluding it from being achieved. So I expect this will still change before it's final. However, this is the most current, up-to-date information on the status of that.
Was that it, John? Oh, sorry. Carrie, did you have something? Go ahead.
Good evening. I like the repeat of the information. I think that's great to just keep hearing this over and over. I wanted to clarify a number. I heard 5% growth, 44K between 42 cities and towns, and then I thought I heard 14,000. Was that incorrect, or is that for the 19 city and towns in King County?
Yeah, so I believe the 44K is population.
Oh, okay.
And I think that translates down to 14,000 housing units. So if you recall, the PSRC uses citations towards growth in terms of people, whereas the county uses citations for growth in terms of housing units.
Great. Okay, thank you. And then I had one other comment. In the planning goals, I noticed in the agenda, some of the words were transposed, and one in particular, and sometimes it made sense, and then I went and looked at the goals, and I think the goals have been updated. They say housing affordability, and then in the packet, it says affordable housing. And so I think that's just one where we need to be very intentional, because they do mean kind of different things to different people. So someone passed along the old goals, and they used to say affordable housing, and they've changed it to housing affordability, yet it still encompasses across the board, all incomes, but just wanted to point that out, that had changed, and so just be mindful as we are putting those two words in what order, where.
That's, that's good feedback, and I think when it's framed to the community, housing affordability is a real relevant topic to the community, whereas affordable housing is something that carries all sorts of, you know, opinions that are already established about it, and it's easier to start a conversation about housing affordability. I will note that even though the county uses the term housing affordability, that the county also is really focused on affordable housing. When they break down and assign units in terms of housing income or bracketed income groups, that's moving away from what I consider to be housing affordability, and it's more focusing strictly on affordable housing, which, you know, say it one way, do it another way, I know that we need to talk about both in this community and in the region. And if we're looking at 1,400 units of 0 to 30% AMI, that really is specific affordable housing. So it's both, but I really feel like, and I heard what you said at the last meeting, and we've been talking about that, you know, how do we start to frame this for the community around housing affordability? Because we all know, we all feel that, right? And another thing I think that's really important, and sorry to stay on this topic, maybe, is we need to think about housing in terms of all those people that, and the workforce that supports the city and how it operates, not the city necessarily, the city, but the schools, the grocery stores, the utilities. And if the community was to face a big snowstorm, or an earthquake, or something catastrophic that resulted in those people who open up the grocery stores and staff the grocery stores not being able to arrive to the city, those that need to plow the roads in the city but can't get here because they can't even drive the, you know, the 90 minutes they normally would drive to here, they can't do it. Those that run the sewer pump stations and make sure that they don't back up and overflow. Thinking about all of those different employment groups, majority of those staff that work for those different services in the city don't live here and don't live, really, a lot of them anywhere near here. So if we, as a city, want to make sure that we are resilient and we are planning for, you know, inclusion of all those that support the city in living here, well, we really should be talking about these bracketed income groups, and that's housing affordability, but it also merges into affordable housing.
One thing I want to say, just in response to that comment, David, is I think I'm in exceptional agreement with you, and I think that it would be valuable to do some analysis of that, because it's pretty easy to throw around grocery store clerks, but then 0 to 30% AMI, how do those two relate together, right? I mean, I think at some point, there's a big, we are fortunate that we can do this, but we tend to throw around terms 0 to 30% AMI, 35% AMI. What do those numbers mean, and what are the real people that those represent? And I think we should be cautious about generalizations that can create perception and policy that may not be accurate to what we're really trying to fix or trying to do. So anyway, just, you know, when we start to talk about those services and those people, we should, at some point in this process, get more dialed in on what we're talking about.
That's great feedback, and we would probably need to do, you know, inventory of what the different income levels were for various positions, and then try to relate that to housing expenses and the area incomes and the HUD components of that, and try to get an understanding of what we should be planning for here in the city, at least at a minimum to accommodate, you know, a reasonable number of those that work here for their profession.
Yeah, when we're extending my comment, when we're told 1,400 dwelling units for people in the 0 to 30, that, to me, indicates that we need to dig into that further and understand what that really means. If it was a broad spread of the housing units over a broad category, income category range, and, you know, that's one thing, but this is a pretty specific thing that I think requires us to do more diligence on what that actually is we're talking about. And I mean, just the fact, it bothers me that it's 0 to 30. How do we build housing for people that have zero income? That's a hard question to answer. So anyway, just a comment of, I am in exceptional agreement with your statement, and I think we should spend more time figuring out what that actually means. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you.
So thanks for the presentation. Very helpful. There's a couple of clarifications, and they're related to the certification process. So towards the end of this presentation, there was a slide that actually said certification and talked about the PSRC, which looked like it was sort of the final authority that would, you know, stamp certified with input from a couple of other organizations or commissions. The clarification I'd like is that earlier on, you talked about the Growth Management Planning Council and a couple of other organizations like the IJT that we would be working with to, and it sounded at the time like get approval or get input. So I'm interested in the interaction between those different bodies. And then the other part of the question is, in prior meetings, you talked about maybe doing a fast tracker and early certification, and then how would that work in with this timeline?
So, yeah, that, thank you for raising that question, and I did not intend to co-mingle to that degree, the GMPC, the AHC, the IJT, which supports the GMPC, and the HIJT, which supports the AHC. Those bodies are seldom involved, we seldom engage with those bodies. We, if we were proposing a change to countywide planning policy, or for example, when we, when our growth target was removed by the King County Council from the countywide planning policies in December of '21 and was remanded back to the GMPC for further review, who in turn remanded it back to the city for work, additional work, we had to work very closely with that group. So really, we just wanted to add them to the presentation to make sure you were aware that there is a, an elected official body, the GMPC, that really is kind of like, they're the advisors to the King County Council on what should and shouldn't be changed in the countywide planning policies. And I think it's, it's important to just understand how they fit in. One of the reasons we added that group in is because of the housing chapter work and the fact that we are going to have to concurrently send our comprehensive plan for review by PSRC, Department of Commerce, and now the King County Growth Management Planning Council, Affordable Housing Committee for a review and certification. That's why we wanted to add that group to that mix. Historically, we would only be sending our comprehensive plan to the Department of Commerce and to Puget Sound Regional Council. This is a whole new step in the process, and it's adding another layer of complexity, expense, whatnot. The second question that you asked is, wasn't there a process that we had identified, pilot city process? There is one that's being discussed, and I actually think that the GMPC is, or the AHC is talking about that tonight, if I recall correctly, Kelly, when that memo was for tonight, or?
I think it was this afternoon.
This afternoon. We had requested from King County that we be notified of what the process would be. We didn't hear from them, so I've reached out again today to see, you know, can the city engage as a pilot city? We would have to, of course, get council buy-off on that if we were to engage as a pilot city, but we do want to know what the steps would be, if the doors closed on that. I understand that Redmond, Snoqualmie, and who else was it, Kelly?
Kirkland.
And Kirkland are, have signed up to be pilot cities with King County and the King County Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay, that's helpful. It'd be very interesting, given the timing with like the housing requirements and so forth that you talked about, that could be a challenge. The reason I asked about the certifying body is just for us to be more aware of sort of the tenor of those groups, and that may influence like what we're thinking about in terms of what really needs to show up in our comprehensive plan. So as we move, and I know this is, you know, a year away, a year and a half away, but as we move through this, it would be helpful to get some sense of the, I said, the tenor or the tone that's coming from these various groups and help us to stay wired, and so we're being able to match the requirements that they may be seeking before certification.
Definitely, that's a great point, and that's actually why I added that bullet in here about city branding and our ability to work with our neighbors is really important here, along those same lines.
Thank you.
Know your audience, right? Sure. TC, did you have anything? No? Okay, I had a couple of questions and maybe one comment. You touched on this a little bit, David. How does the docketing process parallel this effort? Because it seems to me we could frequently take docket requests and sort of say, well, that should be part of the comp plan update, and it seems like maybe we should set expectations with some folks ahead of time, or how's that work?
So we, our docket process is open for '23, and we will be likely taking anything that comes in that is moved on by the city council, by the Planning Commission and city council, and adding it into the comprehensive plan update process for '24. After '24, I believe '24, the same thing, it would just be rolled in, or it would, it would be set in the very fall, you know, the end of the year, in December, and then started on to '25. So for those listening and wondering about the docket process, we went through a process with the city council a few weeks ago where we were able to resort some of the standing historic docket items that remain. We have had what I would consider to be a bit of a bad practice in setting the docket and adding items to our docket list, but not following up on them, or not funding them. So we really wanted to sort of set, reset the docket list, if you will, so that when we get out of this comprehensive plan process, we're starting clean. We don't have a bunch of skeletons in the closet that we have to chase down later. We really want to get through this process and focus on implementing the comprehensive plan that we have and the zoning code that we have, and not live in the past of all these different dockets that had accumulated over time.
My second question, it seems that when we make code changes, which is different, but when we do changes to our ordinances and our code, the conversation is often that there is to try to make people aware that we will make these changes, but what you will see in the community is a delay, a latency to what we do. And I'm wondering if, is that a similar question that someone might ask or that I should ask about the comp plan? So, you know, when we talk about the timeline and the stretches out over two and a half years, and there's an approval process, and it seems possible that maybe we should set some expectations with the community as well, that if we make changes, and you may dislike the change or you may like the change, but either way, if we make changes in the comp plan that are in some ways much different than what we have now, what should the expectation be of when that may actually start to show up in the development of our community?
That's a great question and point. The changes that would be made in policy and correspondingly any code changes would start to show up probably the next year, but on a very small scale. Projects like subdivisions and other large development projects are vested under state law, so we can't change state law. We can't change how much protection is given to a subdivision. And the problem there is that a subdivision can last on the books, you know, 12 to 14 years before it's actually finally built or expired. So if somebody was to say file for a 20-lot subdivision in '24, before our codes and policies were updated, that, you know, it could be almost '20, '30, '20, '40, and that subdivision would still be being built to old policies and old standards. So I think that's on the extreme end of it. We would likely start to see newer... We would likely start to see newer commercial projects, single-family homes on existing lots that might be affected by the changes in policies because they don't vest, they haven't, don't have that vesting and standing. So that's where you would see those changes. We also would see changes in, in the budget proposals for '25 and '26, that next budget cycle. It might be a good time for the city to consider doing something like a budgeting for outcomes or things like that because we have, we might have a whole set of refined changed policies that we need to start working on. So you might see that also as, I'd say the, the most likely change you'll see is in things like budgets and programs immediately, followed by a, you know, two years, five years, 10 years, more and more changes in actual development that's happening on the ground.
Yeah, I guess my thought process here, just being more frank about it, is that there is a potential here for things that people may dislike. And I think it's important to frame the conversation around the fact that that doesn't mean that these changes will occur tomorrow, but they may eventually occur. It just helps the conversation to understand that what we're planning for here is 20 years. And I think it's easy to get distracted and think that, you know, these changes are going to happen in '26 because we approved this thing in '25, right? And we need to kind of keep our eye on the fact that I believe that this is a 20-year plan, and it will take time for anything that we decide to work its way into the system and the community. So that's sort of a question and a comment, I guess.
And I just wanted to add a point of clarification regarding the docket. So the docket was open for 2022. We did not receive any docket applications. So that's why you didn't get that presentation. We are closing the docket for '23, '24 because we are asking that folks in the community to engage in the comprehensive plan update so we're not having this duplicate effort. And then it will reopen for '25 for any updates or amendments to the 2024 comprehensive plan. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Oh, I'm sorry, can you repeat? Oh, they can't?
You have to pick it up and hold it closer.
Oh, okay. Do you want me to repeat that? That would probably be helpful. For those in the community who are interested in amendments to our 2015 comprehensive plan, that is now closed. We actually encourage you to please participate in the update for the comprehensive plan, the 2024. So the docket is not open for, for next year, '23 and '24, but it will open in '25 for any amendments that need to happen to the '24 comp plan, which hopefully there aren't any because we're going to get it right and perfect the first time. Right? Good goal. Okay. I just want to add that clarification.
This seems to me like maybe we should follow up with our next meeting because I'm even listening to you, Kelly. My, I'm struggling to pick up on the timeline because we always, right, we're doing the '23 docket requests in '22. And so then when you say, I'm struggling to follow it. So maybe this would be a good thing to put on a image or a slide.
Right. And regarding the development regulations, a lot of those are influenced by our comprehensive plan. So again, we just want to make sure we're not spinning in circles and making updates that could change because of comp plan policy that's under consideration. So we will put some information on the website to be very clear on that. And we'll aim to have that up by the end of next week. Thanks.
Thanks. The last thing I add was a comment and probably one I've made before. But I think there's a bunch of things that we're talking about for updating the comp plan, and I worry that, as we've seen here and we see all the time, our time gets very consumed by sort of one topic, and that's the housing and the housing affordability. There are other things in there that are super important and going to have a significant impact on the community in the next 20 years. And I'd just like to encourage that all of us, particularly all of you, help us manage our time effectively so that we don't gloss over the things that, in the end, may have just as much as, if not more, impact on our community than just the housing. Everybody cares about, and has passions about housing. It's an important topic regionally and for the city. And so are some of the other things that are part of the comp plan update. And so I just, and I'll probably say it again, but I worry that we get so distracted by the shiny object that we don't spend the appropriate time and energy on those other things. So just an encouragement that we remember to do that.
Thank you. Point taken.
Okay, anybody else? Looks like that's it. Thank you, David. I would say, I think it's easy to say it's, there's a lot of minutia, but this is certainly one of the most important things that the Planning Commission does and has the potential for the most significant impact to people in the community. And so let's take the time and do it the right way. I appreciate the effort.
Thank you to all of you for your time tonight.
Okay, let's move on to agenda-related public comment. Who has agenda-related public comment this evening?
You guys could do rock, paper, scissors. Good evening, the planning commissioners. Paul Stickney, Sam Amish, real good conversations tonight, staff as well. Lots of good topics brought up. They all are important. And I agree with the chair that there's a lot of things that interact in our comp plan in holistic ways. And I believe that the two main engines to effect the most opportunity for enrichment, if you will, and to sustain it is what we do for our critical areas ordinance, which I call the natural environment, to optimize it as much as possible, and the built environment, which is housing first, economics and transportation third. Optimizing those two things go hand in hand and have the most effect across the board. David Pyle mentioned the King County CPPs. I got online and looked because I didn't know for sure. But they were adopted 12/21, 21, and ratified by the GMPC on 4/6/22. I did not have those numbers off the top of my head. I had to look. And David Pyle and all of you are correct. The county is solely focused on mostly affordable housing, mostly 80% and AMI under. I mean, they do talk about all of it, but that's, that's, that's their, their main focus. But in Sam Amish, we have to be mindful of regional growth targets and what the county is trying to do. But as I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, those are only two of six topics to be mindful of. We need comprehensive information on our own internal needs in four areas. What are our own internal housing supply gaps? Which a gap is roughly a household's income at 30% they can put to housing and then housing available at the price point of that 30% income. There are four major categories within our city. I call them internal categories. Zero to 80% AMI, 80% to over 500% AMI, workforce, and all the, you know, I'll spit out the D, all the demographic groups in our city. The housing needs assessment is incomplete and inconclusive on specific gaps in any of those four categories. It did not identify housing supplies versus economic and demographic group factors to find surplus and shortage-specific housing gaps for all income levels in Sam Amish. And I'm going to extemporaneous for a second. I think our growth target is not lacking from a perspective of our community's share of regional growth. I understand wanting to keep that as low as possible. But it's severely lacking in not considering at all the four categories I discussed. What are our own internal needs over life for 0 to 80%? From 80 to 500% for workforce and the demographic needs? It's got anecdotal leading information, but the specific numbers are not there, and they can be obtained. I'm not saying they should all be met. I'm saying they should all be known, and the consequences of meeting them should be compared to see which set of outcomes are best for our community, meeting some of those needs or not. Now I'll get back on script. Some interesting points, and I can't see my timer. Oh, yeah, I can up there. Good. On the, you know, growth target, here's some interesting facts. In our cohort, which is the city and town cohort, if Sam Amish would have set its growth target based on our share of our population to the cohort, our growth target would have been 6,200, and it's now 2,100. If we were in the higher categories, it would have been 7,400 or 10,000. So Don Jerrand and others, who were instrumental in helping getting Sam Amish moved from larger cities to the lowest category, this time helped us stay in the lower category. Past growth targets in Sam Amish were higher. None of those considered internal needs. Now here's some interesting facts. The two comp plans we've had in 2003 and then in 2015, I'll just summarize. They had affordable housing targets at categories below 80% AMI. Our city had planned to meet over 1,300 affordable housing units at 80% AMI and under, and we constructed 65. It's impracticable to think that we can build 1,300, 0 to 30, without having some sort of, and here's where I, I will assert this, the community may not agree, but our own internal needs, if you look at October 20th email I sent to all of you, PDF number L is the enrich and sustain articles. And Article 6 says, "Keep regional growth as low as possible in the future." Completely agree. But that body of work also calls for understanding what our internal needs are and contrasting what happens if we do and don't meet those, those needs. And if you look at PDFG, which is Housing Affordability Through Balanced Sustainable Housing, in 2010, I and several others in the community, because the comp plan did not have specific information, we put information together and found a very low range that we needed to add for our community beyond what's already planned for is 4,000 different and diverse housing, up to 16,000 before Klahani, before everything we've added. And now, and, and here's the bottom line. Get the data on what needs and wants are. Talk about pros and cons, compare consequences, put it in front of our public, and see which land use direction has the most benefit to the most number of things that make up our city. Appreciate the chance to chat.
Thanks, Paul. Who else?
Hi, this is Mary Victor. I've been in Sam Amish 22 years. I've also been the one who earned the frequent flyer points for doing all those dockets. And I didn't have to submit any this year because they're supposed to work on them. So I do agree with what Deputy Director of Community Development, Kelly Hildy, said. When they did the last comp plan, I think they did not take comp plan updates for about two, three years, and I get that. And then our consultant here from Framework did a lot with development regulations. So if you're going to do a text amendment to change the code or if you're going to do comp plan, the real answer is get involved now. This is a really important time for anyone and everyone to have input so that we can get our comprehensive plan, our goals and policies and the development code that we're changing done. So it's a two-year that, I know the city wants everyone to be involved, and it is super important. So the more that we can ask people and listen to them, that's very important. On what Paul Stickney had said before me, there are internal needs and wants. For example, should we just be letting parcels of land sell, go for the highest market rate, and building more McMansions? Because more McMansions means more families, more traffic, probably more bedroom commuters, probably more people filling the schools. And we won't have the people to do the jobs that need to happen to support that. I can give you an example. I go to a lot of the Sam Amish Plateau Water and Sewer District meetings. They serve most of Sam Amish because northeast just serves the area that isn't really growing up by Sahali anymore. Their people, they have people that are fantastic that have been there for a long time. They used to have about 50 employees, and I think they've grown. But they're replacing some of those. And the people that are coming in, they're trying to train them and keep them so they can run the water and sewer services so that we could be able to have like emergencies and daily operations. And a lot of those people, they're coming, they're joining, and if they're driving more than 20 minutes, they're quitting and they're going and taking another job elsewhere. Same thing happening with teachers. You just, I think Deputy Mayor Lamb had said it. She said, "You're not going to get teachers that are going to come teach here and work and stay with the kids if you don't have housing for them." So I think the workforce, housing, and the internal needs are really important. The other thing is, several times I've talked in non-agenda public comment about the ARP data from, that we're becoming an aging nation, like there will be more old people than there are kids coming in. There's also census data from 2010, 2020, which I still haven't looked up and sent in, but I've seen other people present at other places. And it says we're getting more people that are living and it's, they're just alone in a house. And they need somewhere they can downsize, and they'd like to stay in their community. Peoples, they get older, they don't want to move somewhere else and get new friends and forget where they lived. They want to be able to stay here. And I think one of the easiest ways to actually get affordable housing choices is let people know, if you own a house, you can rent out some rooms. People can live with you, and you typically will rent out at an under-market rate, and it lets people live there. I've lived in those houses before. I've run those houses before. And I think people don't know that. So I think we need to look at the current stock that we have, what are different uses of it, what are better ways to use it, what are, that more people could achieve. You could have a nanny live with you, you could have a caregiver live with you, you could have a neighbor live with you, you could have students live with you, you could have a teacher live with you through part of the year, or a new single person. And so there are ways to do that. I think that's very important. I haven't heard anybody say that. With regard to the changes that are needed, oh, actually, let me do this. So the comprehensive plan, I live very close to Mark Cross. He was mayor in 2007. He was on city council for about eight years. He's worked 40 years in the industry of urban planning. He's got education for it. I believe he's worked for three counties in five different cities. And I know he's worked with David Pyle before, I believe, through Bellevue. He told me in the beginning, he said, "Mary, the comp plan, it's the guiding light. It says where things are going to go." And he goes, "If you're not in the comp plan, you don't exist." And I mean that literally, because you've got to have the topics and the titles and the things in the comp plan. If they're not there, you're not going to make any headway because it's hard enough just to get those things implemented. And then once those things are in, and one of those is a vision statement. A vision statement is very important. It's kind of like the word description, like you've ever worked for a corporate company. They always have the mission and the value, vision and value statement. It's sort of like that for the city. And then you have to look at the goals and policies. And I was glad to hear the consultant who's still here from the prior meeting on the planning summit, that they're going to start with the goals and policies that we have and then go. So I've done a lot of brainstorming, community input things through my life. And one of the best ways to do it is sometime in the next month, write down stuff that's important to you, things that you hear in the news, things that you see, things that are really important that you like, things that you don't like, which were like what the questions we did during the planning summit, and write those things down. And then as you go through, I did eventually read the comp plan. Then I've read it several times, and then I found errors in its things. And that's how we've got docket changes. But if you find those things are missing, then they can get added. And then if you look at the existing goals and policies, which are pretty easy to read because there's two different volumes, and they're, I believe, in the first volume, then you can read them and say, "Do these make sense? We wrote these down, but we didn't implement them because as Director Pyle said, you know, you, you write down what you want, but it kind of is up to the community. Do you have the willfulness and the money and the budget to get there?" And so if those weren't implemented, should they be removed? Should they be modified? All the climate stuff's probably new. I think we just don't have a lot of those. So it's very important to do that. And you can't do it in a single setting or a single meeting or over time. You just kind of have to have, I don't know, a spiral notebook somewhere in your house that you write down on or a little notepad you type on your computer or something. It is important to do those things. And I talk with neighbors all the time that can't come to meetings. They're interested. They know I talk a lot. And in the past, I used to be like, you hear it from me and I say my name. And in the past, I used to be like, I, you hear it from me and I say my name, but a lot of my feedback comes from other people. In fact, I think once a year at the Planning Commission, I used to say, "I won't go as far as to say I've never had an original idea," because I think sometimes I do think creatively. But what I do is I take things, I hear, I listen, I notice things, I look for patterns, and those piecing it together is what makes me unique, and that's what you see and hear when I give inputs. And a lot of those have converted into code changes, or things that have impacted plants, or wildlife corridors, or where we can build, or restrictions on things so that we aren't spending so much money. So this process that we're going through is one of the most important things you can. These next two years is time for anybody and everybody to get involved, and I hope that I spoke loud enough into the microphone that you could hear me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Julian, is there anybody on the call?
There is not.
All right. Anything else before we adjourn from staff? Do we need to look at the calendar? Is there anything else we need to talk about?
Not tonight. I appreciate your patience and, and endurance in listening to this topic tonight, so thank you.
Well, we can sit here and talk about this, or we can go out in the rain, and I think it's time to go out in the rain. All right, I think we're done for this evening. Would somebody please move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, everyone. Have a, try to have a dry evening.